Member meeting of the Kani Ohe neighborhood board. We are in session. And we are called to order. And our first order of business is to fill vacancies on the board. And I see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Who? David and Neil. That's nine. We have quorum. So we can conduct business. Awesome. Thank you all very much for being on time. So the first order of business is we have vacancies in subdistrict two, seven, eight, 11, and an at-large. And it's my understanding that Vice Chair Lamb, who's in an at-large position, would like to fill the vacancy in subdistrict 11. I don't, we know who you are. You're the Vice Chair of the Board. We don't need to do any of that. So somebody like to make a motion?
Allow Adrian.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Thank you very much. That frees up the at-large. Are there any? Is there anyone here at the meeting that's interested in filling the at-large position? Patty Yamashiro? Any others? Patty, would you mind stepping up to the microphones? Giving a little info about yourself?
Buddy, anyway, my name is Patty Yamashiro. Sorry. Thank you. And I've grown up here in Kani Ohe. I've gone to public school here. I've gone to town. I've gone to private school, to college on Mainland. I'm here now. My family, everybody's here. I always had a, I intend to stay here. And I want to always keep Kani Ohe the way it is and the way I grew up. Kani Ohe. I can serve. I seem to.
Thank you. I'd like to add that Patty has been a former board member for a number of terms and is a real staple in the community. So is there a motion for Patty to fill the at-large?
Sakamoto motions to have.
Sakamoto motion. It's been seconded by Carsonson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Spencer, after we're done with this, will you be doing a thing? Okay. And we have other subdistricts open. What was the subdistrict? We have an opening in subdistrict 14. That was Josh Who's subdistrict. And he's been out of town since the beginning of our session back in July and submitted a letter to the to the commission saying that he wasn't going to be able to participate. So we have that vacancy as well. It is not on the agenda. Does that matter? Is there anyone else from subdistrict 14 who's interested in serving that spot?
I am. Want to be on.
Sorry? All right. If, I don't know who's online. Who said that? Who said that? If you wouldn't mind going to the microphone and introducing yourself and telling us a little bit about yourself?
Good evening. I'm Brian Heverly. And so my wife and I, we've lived over here in Kani Ohe since 2011. But I'm actually, I grew up on the big island in Oahu. Went to University of Hawaii. My wife grew up on Maui. So, you know, we've always, my path took me into the military. The military for me here. Retired as a major. And then I went into contracting in federal government. Was with them for about 10 years. And then I just recently, about a year ago, retired. So this, I'd like to help out the community. Josh is my neighbor and had suggested that I would be a good fill. So he asked me if I would like to step up. So I came forward and you folks are, would like me to serve?
Awesome. Thank you very much. And I asked initially if there were any other folks that wanted to serve in subdistrict 14. And I heard somebody say, I do. And it wasn't your voice. Is that person still present? And if so, please unmute yourself and say a little something about yourself so we can know about you. Hearing hearing that comment once again, I'd like to make a motion or I'd like to ask if there is a motion for Brian? If, for Brian to serve in subdistrict 14? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Welcome to the board. We'll be in a quick recess while Spencer administers the oath. And we have two new board members joining us. Yes, sir. Wow, subdistrict eight is open. Wonderful. Why don't you come to the microphone as well?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mark Brandl. I live in Subdistrict Gate over Calamalo Place off Kaneki Street. I've lived in Kani Ohe for 20 years. I've lived in Kani Ohe for 20 years. Currently, I am the CERT chair. If you're not familiar with CERT, CERT is the Community Emergency Response Team. And I am the chair for that. I'm also the technical operations lead, which means if anything should ever happen in terms of a disaster, I'm going to be the one that's leading the group to help assist our neighbors in the neighborhood. I also happen to teach CERT for the DEM. And my goal here is to help the board, help the people of Kani Ohe know what we can do to be sustained, to be self-sufficient, to take care of ourselves, our families and our neighbors in the time of a natural disaster. I attended the town hall meeting at the end of October. And there were a couple of questions that were asked along the lines of what happened in Lahaina. What can we do to mitigate wildfires? Because we have to understand that we are not immune to wildfires. We just had a wildfire a little while ago in Kahului. There was a bit of a wildfire going down Leke Leke a couple of weeks ago. So we are open to that kind of a hazard. What was I going to say? What was I going to say? Oh, the other question from the town hall meeting was the appearance, sudden appearance of tsunami signs. And it was like, do we all of a sudden live in a tsunami area? And the answer is no. It's just that the signs have been made available for us to be able to put up in those tsunami-prone areas. Now, if individuals want to learn more about the kind of disasters that we are prone to, how we can prepare to mitigate those kinds of disasters and then also help ourselves, our neighbors and our community.
Hey, Mark?
Yes.
It sounds like you're going to be a great fit for our CERT committee that we have on the board. So that tells us a little bit about you. And we appreciate the information.
Thank you.
And is there a motion to?
Sakamoto motions to have, Mark?
Sakamoto motions?
Second.
It's been seconded. All in favor of Mr. Brandl? Any opposed or abstentions? We've got three new board members. If you guys were going to be in, we'll adjourn for the. Yes, thank you for the applause. We'll adjourn for just a moment while Mr. Johnson administers the oath of office. So we'll adjourn for just a moment.
And you guys have eyes in the back of your. Pretty long. Which way? Donald, do it as. Just a little bit.
Forward.
Have it stop. Come down just a little bit. Ready?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for the logistics. And we are back in session. Congratulations to three new board members. How about one more round of applause for folks that want to serve the community? All right. Moving on to the next order of business is the Honolulu Fire Department. Is there a representative to provide a brief? Honolulu Police Department?
Board.
There we go.
Good evening, board.
Hello?
Aloha. I'm Sanford Yu. I'm one of the night watch attendants in District Four. Presenting you the stats from October. In October, there was one motor vehicle theft versus six the prior month. There were seven burglaries versus five the prior month. Regular thefts, 18 compared to 20 the prior month. Motor vehicle break-ins, five compared to three the prior month. And there were no robberies compared to one robbery the prior month. I'd be willing to take any questions at this time.
Are there any questions from the board for the Honolulu Police Department? Donald and Laura, in that order?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Concerning my question I had last minute, I asked the Traffic Violation Bureau. I talked to Chief Logan last week on the Ricca Moda show. And he told me to go back to District Four for the answers. So can I work with somebody at District Four to get those dates and times of the citations on H3 that I'm requesting?
I will have to look into that for you, Mr. Sakamoto. I don't have the answer off the top of my head. And I do not know how we will get those statistics. If you can email me and I will get back to you.
Okay.
My email is. I'll get your email. First initial, last name. Yeah. Did you have any other questions, Mr. Sakamoto?
Laura?
No, I appreciate your reports that I get from the officer giving me about H3 statistics. I pass it on to the board. But kudos for you folks for doing the citations on H3. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for for all the work that you guys are doing, especially on that one issue. And then my question was, I just realized, what's the difference between theft and robbery?
Theft can be something like your bicycle is stolen, your surfboard is stolen. Robbery is theft with force. So if you're walking down the street, I throw you on the ground to steal your handbag, that's a robbery. Commission of theft with the use of force is robbery.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
Any other questions for the Honolulu Police Department? From anybody present?
Neil has a question.
Or online?
Neil has a question.
Go ahead, Neil.
Could you repeat your email address, Lieutenant?
First initial, last name, at honolulu.gov.
Mahalo.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. See you next month.
Yes, sir.
And hopefully, next month, just so you know, next month meeting is potluck. So get somebody to take your place for a little bit and come on over and enjoy some food with us. Or is he already gone? Honolulu Fire Department? Marine Corps Base Hawaii. And they are present?
Aloha. Good evening. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, board. And thank you, community members. My name is Kristi Palauhiva. And I'm going to share some good things. And Major Fox will share really important detailed information. So first off, I wanted to share that on October 30th, we hosted the Kapole Marine Corps ROTC. And that is the only high school in Oahu that has a Marine Corps ROTC. The students engaged with STEM activities. They were able to participate with the Explosive Ordnance Detail Team and try on and see what it feels like to get into the suits that protect them. They were able to have discussion about what all that is. One of the highlight questions was, what does this job entail? What is the MOS? And how do I get involved? I thought that was just amazing at that high school level that they were interested in that type of job. A couple of other things that were really positive and encouraging and just kind of a feel-good story. We had a Gold Star family that on November 1st, 1973, exactly 50 years ago, the father, who was a Vietnam Vet Veteran pilot, had been stationed in Hawaii for only approximately four months. And during a training flight, crashed. And they had been, as I said, only stationed in Hawaii for about four months, had purchased a home. And they came back for the first time, the three daughters, along with their children and grandchildren, to celebrate that 50 years. And the Marine Corps Base was able to host and just kind of maloma that family. They had the Marford Pack Band, had somebody come out with big trumps. It was, I wasn't present, but got to coordinate some of the event as well as Major Fox. It was really beautiful that we were able to encourage and help that Oahu out. Another good thing that is coming up, if the community wants to get involved, the Marine Corps Base has its Weed War Year on December 9th. It is open to the public. The phone number is on the environmental site. If there's more detail that you'd like. There is a big push to remove mangrove that you see that is on that H3 freeway, which is wonderful because, as you all know, right by the Long Bridge, Kaka Oeivi as well as Pai Pai Oheia have been, over the last 10 years, really pursuing removing that invasive species and how that's going to help the Kani Ohe Beala, Oahu Wa. And Marine Corps Base, partially for security reasons, but also in part to participate in that purpose. Big thing, Pacific Fest coming up in 2024 of June. Something that we can all keep our ears and open to. Marine Corps Base has been asked if we can look at how we can support. And then this way is with the Vah. So they are anticipating 23 Pacific countries bringing their canoes. And there's going to be, as you guys know, Oahu is the birthing place of the Pukulea. And all of these different countries will be bringing their Vah. And they're looking for a place to dock those Vah on the windward side prior to the ceremony that will be happening June 5th. So we're going to be working and talking to see how we may be able to support that. And, oh, Makahiki. We're doing the Makahiki this weekend on Marine Corps Base with our Lenial Descendants, the Hewitt family, who lives right down the road, a large number of them, and a few other of our Lenial Descendants. That's all I have for the good stuff. If you have any questions, we'll turn it over to Major Fox. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got time, Chair? One minute? Okay. All right. So first, I want to say happy birthday to the sailors that raise the room. I also want to say happy Veterans Day. I know it's belated, but thank you for your service. We appreciate you. Okay. So Marine Corps Base Hawaii is going to publish a draft environmental assessment on December 26th. Okay? So we're doing something somewhat unprecedented. We're getting ahead of it. We're giving the community a lot of time. Guy Perez just shared the website. If you look to the screen, if you look towards the top, it says ground forces modernization. So what we've done is we've established a website. And if we can scroll down, what you'll see is we have some fact sheets, some frequently asked questions, some contact information so the community can make an informed decision and also provide some comments to us once that public comment period opens on December 26th. This has to do with ground forces modernization. So in 2021, we talked about the modernization of aircraft and maybe some hangars and some other stuff. So this time around, we're focused on ground modernization. What that means is we're going to have some stuff that's already relevant and prevalent in the Marine Corps, the JLTV, which you've seen on the highways of Oahu, the naval strike missile, some other things. So all this data is there for you to see ahead of time. And then, once we go public on December 26th, this website will be updated with the EA and also where to send your, where to send and how to send your public comments. So just, any questions? That's all we've got from Marine Corps Base Hawaii tonight.
Any, I see Mr. Sakamoto. Any others? Okay, go ahead, Don.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Major. Question is, how is the drone situation doing? Is it going very well right now? We have them. And I understand there's going to be a Bay Fest sometime next year, was reported. Do you know when the release of what's going to be the activities, entertainment, logistics, all that kind of stuff?
All right. So I'll address the bad news first. All right. I just learned today that Bay Fest has been canceled primarily due to the short timeline between now and February 24th, 2024, when it was going to occur. So Common Kings was the headline. But there's just between government potential shutdown and some other things, maybe some money and some other planning issues. We're going to have to call it off for now. Second question, referring to the unmanned area of vehicles. They're doing great. We've gotten them forward to the west, to that first island chain, essentially, you know, Philippines, Guam, some other areas. So they're training, they're doing operations, and they're doing everything they can.
Any other questions? Mahalo.
Thanks.
Say again? Fire Department is here? All right. We'll hear from the Honolulu Fire Department.
Sorry for the tardiness. My name is Captain Glenn Camp. I'm from the Kani Fire Station. And here's your statistics for October. As far as fires, we had one wildland brush fire. We had three nuisance fires. And we had eight activated alarms, which resulted in no fires. We had 154 medical emergencies, one motor vehicle verse pedestrian collision, two additional motor vehicle collisions, and one hazardous materials incident. The fire safety tip this month is holiday cooking safety. Keep everyone safe this holiday season. Thanksgiving is the peak day for home, twice the daily average. Unattended cooking is by far the leading contributing factor in cooking fires and fire deaths. Stay in the kitchen and focus on the food when you're cooking on the stove. Stay in the home when you're cooking your turkey and check on it frequently. If you want to fry turkey, purchase it from a grocery store, restaurant, or buy a fryer that does not use oil. Turkey fryers that use cooking oil are not safe. These fryers use large amounts of oil at high temperatures, which can cause devastating burns. Consider purchasing an infrared fryer, air fryer, or electric turkey fryer that has been listed by a qualified testing laboratory. Do not leave fryers unattended when in use. That's all I got. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for the Fire Department?
Where was the wildfire?
Where was it? I'm sorry, was that?
Correct.
I'd have to check back and get back to you next meeting on the exact location.
Okay, thank you.
Hearing no others. Thank you very much. Don't forget, we have potluck next month. Come across the street and share with us. And we hope to see you in person.
Okay. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Next is Hawaii Department of Transportation.
Hi. Aloha and good evening, Chair and members of the board. My name is Lee Nagano. I'm here from the Hawaii Department of Transportation. Thank you for the invitation. I'm going to read off the questions and responses. The questions that were provided by Mr. Sakamoto on behalf of the board and then the responses. Question number one was regarding to ask us to provide an update on the Wilson Tunnel Honolulu-bound lane closures due to the replacement of the rods in the ceiling. The installation of the repair rods has begun for critical areas. The DOT anticipates completing this work by the weekend. And by Monday, 11:20, the scaffolding will be down and both lanes will be opened. Work will continue on critical but non-failed rods, but scaffolding in the lane will not be required. Let's see. I was asked to provide an update regarding the repaving of Kamehameha Highway from Castle Junction to the intersection by Windward Shopping Center. Work will begin on December 4th with the lowering of the manholes with paving to follow approximately two weeks after that. The contractor will start in the vicinity of Haleko'u and work toward Poli Highway, then back to Leke Leke. Anticipated completion of this project is summer 2024. Anticipated completion of this project is summer 2024. Regarding the dramatic bump on H3 viaduct over the Lekelike Highway Honolulu-bound, where the asphalt does not line up smoothly with the concrete, causing a safety issue to vehicles going up and down. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. We're gonna have an inspector check out that area. There was a concern about the signage on freeways needing to be replaced due to fading. And particularly issue would be the H3 near Kamehameha Highway with large amounts of overgrown vegetation that cover part of the sign and make it difficult for drivers to see. And the other location of concern is off Kahikili Highway onto Lekelike on ramp to H3. Doesn't have adequate reflectors. Thank you also for that. We'll have an inspector go out and inspect the signs at the areas provided to us. Regarding concerns about the large drain pipes under H3 near Kiaonaole Road that were built in the mid-eighties near the cutoff by Kamehameha, are they being inspected for DV blocking the drain accessway into the ditch stream, such as overgrown trees and other vegetation? Our response is, as part of our permit requirements, illicit discharge detection and elimination program and outfall field screening plan, our District Highway, the Oahu Office, have consultants. They've hired Enviral Services and Training Center, field screen outfalls for the purpose of detecting and eliminating illicit discharges at least once per permit term. Five-year permit term is typical. For the subject area, our consultants inspect these outfalls annually. The last inspections of these outfalls were done on August tenth, 2023, and no illicit discharge was found. Please note that we believe the outfall and downstream channel is outside of our right-of-way and as within the state preservation land, which is controlled by the DLNR. It seems that our right-of-way is limited in the subject area, and the possible overgrowth of trees and vegetation may be from adjacent properties. We're trying to verify that. The Kaniohe stream is conveyed through some of our coverts and in the area. According to the City and County Hawaii website, the upstream properties are First Presbyterian Church, Koala Ballrooms, and Poli Golf Course. As for our coverts, our Oahu District Office, Covert Crossing Assessment Program, we will have our consultants structurally inspect and assess the subject coverts. The last inspection of the coverts were done by our previous consultant in 2011 and 2015, and the assessments were not found to be of high repair priority. Our current consultant have these coverts on their upcoming inspection and assessment schedule. Please note that if our consultants find that the covert has excessive debris within it, we will place it on our priority cleaning list for our future pipe cleaning service contract. If our consultants deem the covert high repair priority, we will place it on our priority repair listing and for future construction repair project. Lastly, there was an ask for an update of the noise enforcement cameras. The DOT staff are working with our partners on the request for proposals. Want a timeline for when it will be posted, I will provide an update to the board. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you, Lee. I see, I see you. I see you, Don, just wait a second. From Kahiko Street through the H3 interchange in the Poli direction, the road is like a Disney ride. Is there any plans to have that stretch of road repaved?
I will check.
And that's, Kahiko Street is the one that's the first street after you've gone past Hawaii Memorial Park?
Okay, so Kahiko Street, on to H3? Sorry, I'm not familiar with the area.
All the way through the interchange, all the way through the interchange of the H3 on the way to the Poli. If you ever drive it, you'll know what I'm talking about.
Okay, I've noted that down. I'll follow up.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sakamoto and Vice Chair?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Lee, thank you for that report. Question about the properties that are in question, the Koala Golf Course, Presbyterian Church, and the Poli Golf Course, taking the lead on their drainage over there in the stream. Has letters gone out to them from the state to inform them that they are responsible to make sure that the streams are clean and safe?
I'll follow up with our engineers about that as well.
Thank you, Lee. Great report.
Vice Chair?
Yeah, Lee, thank you for the update and the quick response from DOT to respond to Lekelike tunnels and also for the advance notice on it. I think it's helped their community to know about that and able to adjust to traffic on those days. I think I did add ten minutes to my commute, but I think that's good for us that we're safe going through the tunnels. Also want to commend you, the DOT, for also addressing the roadside vegetation and took this opportunity to cut back a lot of that vegetation on the Lekelike Highway. So thanks for doing that.
Thank you. Thank you for the kind words. And just for everyone listening, you know, you're always welcome to check the DOT website. We always have the most up-to-date information on current and upcoming repairs and projects.
Hi, Lee, this is Holly here. Thank you for the updates. I have two notes for you. Kaniohe Bay Drive, adjacent to the Yacht Club, has no road marking paint left. They didn't paint it thick enough when they put it down. It's all gone. If you could send someone to inspect that, I think the neighbors would appreciate that. So that's Kaniohe Bay Drive, adjacent to the Yacht Club. The second, and I've tried to report this a couple of times, there's two road lights, streetlights out. Unfortunately, one is right over a new speed bump by Castle High School. That's been out for at least six months. The other light out, it's in between the two random speed bumps, you know the ones I'm talking about, by the memory care center. You're not quite sure why they're there. In between those two ones, there's a street light out. Why is it important? Because they're relatively new road bumps, and people need to be able to see them at night for safety. Thank you very much.
May I ask a question? Can you all hear me?
Who is this?
My name is Ann Lente, and I don't think this was on the agenda. Donald Sakamoto invited me to the meeting, and I didn't want to wait till the end because the DOT concerns the audible pedestrian signaling in my neighborhood that kind of works, some of it works. And first, I want to...
What's, can you, Ann, could you go ahead and tell us where that is?
Yes, I will, totally. And first, I, since this is not totally a positive report, I want to absolutely commend Mr. Sniffin and his staff for making it a priority, but it needs some work. Okay, so the first crossing that I need to make, because I live right next to the Toyota Place. So if I could cross straight across safely, because I'm blind and I can't cross straight across without getting run over, but there, I, you know, I would be at the gas station anyway. But what I have to do is cross Makalani Street and then kind of swerve a tiny bit to cross Kaniohe Bay Drive. Now, first, the Makalani Street part of that signal doesn't work at all. And it just doesn't. I don't, I think that they tried to reach, however they would connect the wiring underground, and they just couldn't do it or something. I don't know.
Hey, so, Ann?
Yes.
Ann, are you talking about Makalani Street and Kaniohe Bay Drive?
Oh, yeah.
Are you saying that the, are you saying that the crosswalk is inoperable or the crosswalk?
Yeah, the first one, the first one, the one at Makalani.
Okay, thank you. Is there another one, please?
Wait, wait, there's three here. The second one, crossing Kaniohe Bay Drive, is a little bit off. I can hear it a little bit. I wish they could make it a bit louder. And then, so you cross Kaniohe Bay Drive, and then you get to where you're gonna need to cross Almoku. So it's kind of, you're kind of making a U. Okay. And the Almoku signal is very loud and is very detectable. But it's the last one that I need to use coming from home. So it would be nice if they all worked. Now, this could be a confounding variable that, because they're all literally very close to each other. If you want to check it out, you'll think, how in the world? Because they really are all close together. So it might have been a good idea.
So, Ann, can I get your attention, please?
Yes, sir.
Is there a way you and I can talk offline and I can get the exact addresses of these locations, and I'll be able to pass that on to Lee Nagano?
Absolutely.
Okay. Don Sakamoto, do you know how to help get us together?
Yes, Chair, I will do that. I have her contact information.
Thank you very much. Ann, I'll be in touch with you.
And thank you, sir. And thank, and I just want to tell all of you, this is wonderful work that you all are doing. I had no idea how much the Neighborhood Board does. So anyway, I will probably need to leave the meeting in a bit, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments for Department of Transportation? Lee, thank you so much for coming, and we appreciate you, oh, Kristy? Sorry, one more.
One quick question in regards to the speed bumps. Are there any plans or has anybody previously requested for one in front of Ohiia Elementary? And if not, what is the process to look to see if that could be something that we can put in? Thank you.
Okay, I'll check into that, but I'm not sure if that's city and county jurisdiction, but I'll follow up on that as well.
Thank you. All right, Lee, thank you again, and I'd just like you to know that our December meeting. Ben? Okay, go ahead. One more question, Lee.
We're talking about these speed bumps, crosswalk. The city can start going back, backtracking and raising them up again. Everyone that I travel on, on state highway, is all leveled already. It does not work. It does not slow traffic down. You think I'm joking? To follow a trash truck on Kaniohe Bay Drive? Follow, see if he, he might just hit his brakes, lights come on, and he's right over. Those good intentions, what the city is doing, is a temporary. But other than that, you gotta keep, you gotta raise them up again. Because all it does is just about four inches asphalt attached to the regular pavement. So it's not holding off. It's just, asphalt is just running when you get off.
Yeah, we'll make sure that we get that comment to the Department of Transportation Services for the city. Lee is coming from the state.
Okay, state, Kanioe Bay Drive, what is it? Going up Poli Highway, and in fact, even down in the one way already. All those speed bumps, they get there, it's off, they will operate.
Thank you.
That's where's money. I don't know where they went. Thank you.
All right.
Lee, did you? Thank you.
Yes, I did get that. Thank you. And also thank you to Representative Kitagawa. The Haiku Road is in the jurisdiction of the city and county of Honolulu. I would imagine could reach out to either the mayor's office or the city and county of Honolulu's Department of Transportation Services.
Thank you, and they'll be on this call later. All right, thank you so much for coming, Lee. I know you come maybe once a quarter, and we save up all of the good stuff for you when you show up. Really, really appreciate you coming and helping us out.
Thank you very much, and happy holidays, everyone.
Please feel free to join us in December at our December meeting and partake in the potluck.
Thank you very much for the invite. Mahalo.
Next, I'm happy to have, but not for the circumstance, the Administrator of the Hawaii State Hospital to come chat with us today. The State Hospital had previously been on our monthly agenda, and after the, after all of the issues for the new facility were solved and the hospital was up and running, they came off of the agenda, and it might be not a bad idea to add them back on. So is the Administrator for the Hawaii State Hospital here? Thank you. And let us also say that the board is, passes on our condolences to the HSH family for the loss that you all had.
Thank you, Chair Radke. Thank you for the condolences. I'm happy to be here, members of the Neighborhood Board. I've been a Kaniohe resident for many years, very five years, raised my family here. Hawaii State Hospital has been a part of this community since the mid-1900s. And Kaniohe has been a good neighbor to the hospital. Thousands of people have gotten treatment at Hawaii State Hospital and recovered and has gone through the different levels of care at the hospital, transitioned out into the community, oftentimes to a home in Kaniohe. And Kaniohe has been very tolerant, very supportive of those recovering from mental illness. But on Monday, we lost one of our staff, and we appreciate the condolences. A member of our staff was stabbed by a resident in a group home on our campus. He's very young, a good man. Tragic. Family's devastated, of course. We send our condolences out to staff. Besides feeling terribly for the family, for his loved ones, they're in shock. This is the first death we've had of any of our staff member, any staff member in the line of duty that we were aware of, known records, the first one. So we're trying to recover, but yet, when Chair Radke asked me to come over, and he said, you know, it was short notice, I thought, yeah, I owe it to the Neighborhood Board to present myself, to answer any questions. I didn't come with the report. I realize you folks probably have read in the news that the hospital is over census. That I heard that, you know, if we're over census, are we going to discharge people more aggressively into the community? And I think those are valid concerns, and I wanted to give all of you folks a chance to ask me any questions, even though I cannot disclose protected health information regarding the patient. I can talk in general about the individuals we serve. I can talk to you in detail about how the hospital operates. So I thought, you know, rather than me come and give you a report, present myself. I'm the new administrator, going forward. And thank you, Chair Radke, if you're gonna have us here on a regular basis. But I promise, we will be honest. We will be open with this board. We are a responsible neighbor, and Kaniohe has been very good to the hospital. We feel like we owe it to the neighborhood. We feel like we owe it to the neighborhood. Uh, so with that, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, address any concerns anyone has.
Any questions from the board? So right off of the bat, um, I, I'm not looking for anything in particular, but the, uh, the facility where this occurred is an open facility, is my understanding. It's open to the public, both in and out.
Correct.
And the people that are in that facility have been, uh, approved to go there. Um, is there anybody who never makes it to the State Hospital proper and just goes to that facility as a form of treatment? Or is it from the hospital to that facility and then discharged from there?
It's a second. It's a step-down program. Uh, somebody in the news described it like a halfway house. Uh, uh, that's more of a, uh, term that the penal system uses. We call it a specialized treatment facility. It's people who are discharged from the hospital. They're ready to live in a, uh, in a non-hospital environment. Uh, medically, we say they don't meet criteria for inpatient care. But they're not quite ready for the community either. So we put them in a 24-hour supervised, uh, setting like this, with, uh, programming during the day and they're on campus. They're separated from the community. But like the chair is, um, asking, they can earn, uh, business to the community. They can go off unescorted. They're not patients anymore. They're living in a group home environment. And that's a big difference I wanted to point out for people who are in, uh, the hospital. They do not go out into the community, uh, except for medical appointments or, uh, things really related to discharge. And they always go in, uh, uh, with staff. They're escorted and many times they go under restraints. So that's a differentiation I wanna make.
Is, is there any map that shows the, I, I'm, my question really stems to being, is Kanyoehe, uh, bearing a larger brunt of the folks that are, are discharged into the community to group homes within Kanyoehe? Or is Oahu wide? Is everything pretty well spread out?
It's getting more spread out, Chair Radke, but we have actually this program and three other group homes on the campus. If you count how many individuals we have in those and you count that as, uh, in the Kanyoehe census, Kanyoehe still has a very high number.
Is that because of proximity, do you think?
Correct.
Any other questions for the Hawaii State Hospital, Mr. Sakamoto?
Yes, uh, thank you for the report. Uh, I actually given us an explanation what happened. Uh, my concern is how many patients are in the main units and how many are in the, uh, uh, other ones that are outside of it? Do you have an estimate how many people?
320 are in the hospital. The program in question, 22. And then three other group homes, uh, with roughly 10 to 15 each. Uh, so look at another 45 in the three group homes, 22 in the, uh, program in question where the stabbing occurred. 320 in the hospital proper.
And how much staff in the group in homes are there? Like three people, two, so many people?
Roughly five, for the, for the group home, the program in question?
Program, yeah.
Roughly five on the day shift, five on the evening shift, three at night. So this happened, uh, in the evening, five o'clock in the afternoon, five, uh, staff members were on.
That's what was reported in the newspaper, was one to five.
One to five, thank you.
Uh, I, I wanna thank you for, for coming down here and presenting yourself, uh, to the board and to the community. Ben, did you have a question? Okay.
Number one. You know, most staff members, right, who manually sit, I'm not talking about safety precautions, ratio. Patient, two nurses per one, especially if the guy is incarcerated in a room, don't send one guy in there. It's just like in a construction industry, when one guy work.
Is, is there a question?
I, I wanted to know what the, if they have any, besides only one nurse going in there to take care of guy, is there another person in with him?
At the State Hospital or at the, uh, Transitional Center?
At the hospital, because I know this was going on for many, many years. Many, many years before your time. But this thing never did come up until when somebody get killed in the hospital.
Yeah, this wasn't killed in the hospital. So you're, I think you're, you're mixing up the two issues. There, there's the Transitional Center, which is outside of the hospital grounds. And then, because I think with the hospital and the new facility, which also reminds me, um, we have three new board members and some other board members that were just elected. If, if you would invite the board to do a tour of the new, uh, facility, uh, I think the board would appreciate that. I know it's been offered before and some of the previous board members went, but to take a tour of the new facility, um, I think that would be, that would be nice.
But the thing is.
And, and Ben, I think your question has to do with the number of nurses and, and, uh, attendants.
Yeah, because the way it seems like, one nurse, the way it give him his medication or something like that, whatever, whatever they had to do. But it shouldn't be one nurse goes in. You should have another backup plan in case like what happened. Like in a construction, you don't send one guy out to work by himself. If he get injured or something, who's gonna call for help? You always need that extra body.
Thank you for that.
Extra body help.
Thank you for that comment. Uh, and again, I appreciate you coming out and, and, uh, on short notice especially. And, uh, I will definitely, uh, put the Hawaii State Hospital back on the agenda.
Thank you. And I will send an invite, uh, to you, uh, to extend to any board members. I'd be happy to host any and all of you on a tour.
Thank you. Mahalo. Okay, moving, moving to resident community concerns. Um, is, are there any resident or community concerns that need to be brought up? And Ann, we have yours already. Kind of in concert with, uh, Lee Nagano. Are there, are there any other resident community concerns? All right, there is a little fire ant resolution that we had on the agenda. We were hoping to have a drafted resolution. But what I'd like to ask the board is, uh, instead of waiting until December where we're having a potluck and not conducting any business, I'd like to ask the board what your thoughts are on asking the Department of Agriculture to hold a hearing about little fire ants, uh, similar to what the Kahaloo Board and some of the other neighborhood boards have, have, uh, and we can do it in the form of a board letter. We don't have to do a resolution. What are your thoughts? This is, I'm just opening this up for discussion right now.
Can you restate the question?
I, there was no question. I was just, what are your thoughts about, I guess that is a question. What are your thoughts about, uh, the Kanyoehe Neighborhood Board submitting a letter for action to the Department of Agriculture to hold the meeting? Who?
No, I would definitely support that. I know in the recent town hall, um, Representative Scott Mottrow, she did a very detailed, uh, in-depth, uh, overview of the situation which is continuing to get worse. So I think a letter is appropriate and to have that opportunity that the community can be updated.
Uh, all right, I'll, I'll draft the letter, send it to the board. So the board is in support of a letter to the Department of Agriculture and the other assorted folks that need to see the letter, supporting the Department of Agriculture to conduct public hearings about little fire ant. And the reason that they weren't was because of contractors or some other reason that they weren't holding meetings while the LFA problem was getting worse and worse and worse. So better for them to do something now instead of waiting, uh, for red tape. That's pretty much what the letter will say. I'll draft it, I'll sign it and I'll forward it all to all of you. Okay, uh, moving on to community organizations. Is there somebody here from Windward Community College? On the TV? Artists? All right. Next will be elected officials. Uh, starting off with, uh, US Representative Jill Tukuda. Or her rep?
Thank you for having me. I'll be here, uh, representing the office of Congresswoman Jill Tukuda tonight. Um, there were a couple of questions, uh, and answers, I believe, sent back to the board, um, from one of the previous meetings. Uh, there was a question from Board Member Sakamoto inquiring about Title III. Did you guys receive the answers? Would you like me to read them? They're a little lengthy. Okay, I'll go ahead and read the question and the answer. Board Member Sakamoto inquired about Title III of the Americans with Disabilities Act 88 and standards from the Department of Justice regarding the accessibility of website content. On March 18th, 2022, the Department of Justice issued its guidance on web accessibility and the ADD. In part, the guidance notes the following. "The Department has consistently taken the position that ADA's requirements apply to all the goods, services, privileges, or activities offered by public accommodations, including those offered on the web. Businesses and state and local governments have flexibility in how they comply with the ADA's general requirements of non-discrimination and effective communication, but they must comply with the ADA's requirements. The Department of Justice does not have a regulation setting out detailed standards, but the department's longstanding interpretation of the general non-discrimination and effective communication provisions applies to web accessibility. Businesses and state and local governments concurrently choose how they will ensure that the programs, services, and goods they provide online are accessible to people with disabilities. Existing technical standards provide helpful guidance concerning how to ensure accessibility of website features. These include the Web Content Accessibility Guidelines and the Section 508 Standards, which federal government uses for its own websites. Even though businesses and state and local governments have flexibility in how they comply with the ADA's general requirements of non-discrimination and effective communication, they still must ensure that the programs, services, and goods that they provide to the public include those provided online are accessible to people with disabilities. For your information relating to the Title II of the ADA in August 2023, the DOJ published a notice of proposed rulemaking on the accessibility of web information and services of state and local government entities." So go ahead and.
Hey Nicole?
That for others.
Can I stop you for a second?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was lame, Pete.
Now, what you, what you're, what you're reading, is that in a, in a document somewhere?
Yeah, I was, I had asked in the beginning. I think maybe you, you were chatting with someone, but, uh,
No, I, I.
If you had received it.
I did not get that. The only thing I received from you was a Rep. Tukuda Community Update Report.
Right, it was sent from someone else at our office. I think it was sent from maybe, uh, David Taga. Back in October.
Yes, I, I, I think preferable to reading a dissertation like that at a meeting like this. If you could just, if you could just communicate that information in layman's terms. And if I can get another copy of that email that I can send to Mr. Sakamoto.
Right, I'm gonna go ahead and send it to you. Um, I.
Thank you.
Just got it, so I haven't gotten a chance to read through the legalese that's on this page. Um, but I can break it down for you in the email, if that's preferred.
That, that, that's fine. Just send that to me in, in the email and move on to whatever your next topic is.
Okay, great, happy to. Um, so I'll start off with actually the, the newest thing. Last night, there was a statewide town hall. Hopefully you all were on there and got to listen to, um, the, the latest and greatest from Congresswoman Tukuda. Uh, this, this month, the Congressional Act Challenge concluded November 1st. Um, we had a, a Kauai Virtual Town Hall. Uh, we had Lenai Satellite Office, or yeah, Satellite, well, saying a lot of words, it's a long day. Satellite Office Hours, Molokai Satellite Office Hours. Um, and, let's see here, yeah. Oh, Maui Strong. Yeah, I'll read this, 'cause, um, this was a big one in our office. Nearly every week that she's home in Hawaii, Rep. Tukuda is on Maui to personally meet with residents and those assisting in the recovery efforts. In Washington DC, Rep. Tukuda continues to advocate for additional federal resources to aid those who were impacted by the wildfires. On the House floor, she introduced a bicameral result, resolution to honor the heroism and sacrifice of first responders and those who lost their lives in the devastating wildfires. The resolution also expressed support for the communities of West and Up Country Maui. She proudly introduced the Maui Strong Act that would provide $20,000 grants to nonprofits, small businesses, and independent contractors that experienced revenue loss due to the fires. These tax-free grants would provide direct relief to the nonprofit and business communities and can be used to maintain payroll, purchase equipment, and pay rent and other expenses. The Natural Disaster Tax Relief Act of 2023, which Rep. Tukuda was pleased to introduce along with Senator Hirono, would lessen the tax burden and penalties for those impacted by the fires as they seek to rebuild their lives. In addition, Rep. Tukuda's staff continues to hold weekly office hours at the Lahaina Civic Center on Wednesdays from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM to assist individuals with any federal issues. This will continue as long as Mega Disaster Center is open. For more information on that, please call our office at 808-746-6220. And so, uh, with that, if anyone needs assistance for, with federal agencies, they can reach out to our office. Um, we are here to help you and we look forward to hearing from you. If anyone has any, any questions about anything in the report that was sent?
Okay, thank you. Moving on to, uh, Governor Green's representative, and I wanna thank Mr. Sakamoto for reaching out to the Neighborhood Commission Office and seeing about getting a representative to come to our meetings. Uh, is there a representative? From the governor's office? Still not yet? Okay. Um, at this time, are there any questions for the governor? Uh, in, in this case, we'll just have to take the questions and put them into the, into the minutes. Um, and for, uh, Congresswoman Tukuda's office?
I have a question for Congresswoman Tukuda's office. Yeah, thanks for your report and offer of, uh, access to federal funds. Um, we have complete street projects here that, um, you know, Honolulu City and County has been trying to find ways to, um, integrate our pedestrian and bicycle, uh, traffic with our roads. And Renee, Renee Espia has been, you know, working with that. And she has some other plans. We tried to talk to her about, you know, finding other accessways that are off the roads that, Kanyoehe, we have lots of streams, lots of hills, but we're constricted by that and traffic is constrained. But if we had access to the streams or better pathways and pedestrian ways, can you find federal funds for us? I know the Corps of Engineers has funds for, uh, along their waterways for things like this. National Park Service also has funds for, you know, pedestrian ways, walkways, as well as the Department of Transportation, which I sit on the Oahu Metropolitan. Department of Transportation, which I sit on the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization. They're trying to find ways to expend Department Transportation Funds, federal funds. So is there a way we can bring that together and make Kanaui more accessible by pedestrians and bicycles that doesn't have to compete with our roadway traffic? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. I'll bring this back to our team. Can I get your name so that I know who to have...
Yeah, sorry, this is Adrian Lam, Vice Chair, in Sub District 11.
And I would appreciate when you do come up with answers to questions from the community and from the board, if you could copy me on those, because I can make sure that the entire board gets the information and not just the person.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you. And you've already got my email.
Yes.
Any other questions? Hearing none, moving into the, thanks very much. Moving into the Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative. Alan, I saw you pop up onto the screen, so welcome.
Good evening, Chair Radke, board members, and Neighborhood Board participants. I just posted Mayor Blangiardi's link for his November newsletter. Just cover a couple of things in the newsletter that may be of interest to Kanaui residents. The city, working with the governor, his cabinet, HHFDC, and other state agencies, we're picking up momentum in housing. Last month, the mayor's Office of Housing submitted the city's 2023 housing plan, which outlines how we will work with the partners I mentioned earlier to develop 18,000 units of housing between the current year and fiscal year 2029. The mayor stated that he envisions, and Oahu, where all residents in each of our communities have access to safe, stable, affordable housing regardless of income level, so today's generation and future generations can continue to call this island home. There have been startup developments of housing. On October 14th, the ground was broken at 1226 Kenau Street, where developer Paul Lam is leading an effort to build 25 new affordable rental units as a part of a project that takes advantage of Bill 1 and Bill 7 for small lot developments on lots less than half an acre. There's a project in the works for 140-unit rental housing project for low-income seniors called Aloha La Ali Viquilo, located on 3.4 acres of state-owned land at the site of the old Haia Sugar Mill. The project received roughly $6 million from the Affordable Housing Fund of the city for construction costs. And the continued groundbreaking for projects as we move along is showing that Honolulu is entering into a new era of action in housing and housing affordability. Moving on, all of the mayors, the four mayors traveled to Maui last month to visit Lahaina Town, which was ravaged by the wildfires. I'm not going to get heavy into that. I think the key point is the mayors, including Mayor Blangiardi, are assembling risk assessment groups. So on a go-forward basis, the mayors can work collaboratively to make sure that what happened on August 8th doesn't happen on their respective islands and for us, Oahu as a whole. With regard to questions from the last meeting, there was a question on the Haia Guardrail It was reported by Department of Facility Maintenance that about 20 new water barriers were installed on Kamia Mia Highway near the Haia Boat Harbor as interim treatment until a future Department of Design and Construction Rehab of Streets project addresses permanent guardrail repairs. Also, due to slightly narrowed Makai Lane and roadway was restripped, DFM crews have been restriping the entire portion of the road between Pehikeeli, Kamia Mia, to Longbridge and have been replacing faded or missing traffic signs as well. With regard to the strobe light issue on Kamia Mia Highway in Kanaui Town, I was informed by BTS that GDC is targeting to bid the rehab project for construction on Kamia Mia Highway in the spring of 2024. And as a part of the rehab work and complete streets for Kamia Mia Highway, there will be strobe lighting for pedestrian crossing at Kamia Mia Highway and Kapalai near Fabric Mark. And there'll be another one, Kamia Mia Highway, at the Pahia Street intersection. The last thing I wanted to comment on is that last week, the Star Bulletin reported on an audit of the CARES Act funding, emergency funding, and emergency funding dispersments. And the audit covered the receipt of $387 million of funds, of which the prior administration expended very quickly. You know, they were in a very difficult time. They had less than nine months to dispense of $387 million in accordance with federal laws, and we know they did their best. With regard to our current administration in 2021, we had a remaining $8 million to dispense, and we were fortunate to be able to dispense the money to provide pest kits, to pay rent for vaccination shots at various sites, and to help to fund short-term sheltering in 2021 for people who needed to isolate from families and relatives that they were leaving with to keep people safe. And there were other expenditures for public safety related to, you know, the remaining $8 million, but we were able to spend those monies responsibly. And just wanted to share that we needed to do an audit, desk audit, federal desk audit by the OIG with regard to the CARES Act funding, and we provided information, you know, on the equipment and vehicles purchased, and did not receive any comments from Treasury. We know they were very busy at that time, as everyone in government, you know, dealing with the pandemic, but to date, we have not received, you know, any feedback from the OIG department. And I'll take questions after Councilmember, Vice Chair Kiaina.
Thank you very much. I know Councilmember Kiaina is not in today, and Jaren is here to provide that brief, so Jaren, off you go.
Good evening, board members. My name is Jaren McCartney. I work for Councilman Kiaina. The first thing I wanted to mention was, Councilmember on November 3rd conducted a site visit with Kanaui District Park staff to discuss ongoing improvements, including the tennis court.
Jaren, I'm sorry, can I ask you just to slow down your speech rate just a little bit, please?
Okay, yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the site visit was to discuss improvements at Kanaui District Park, which includes the tennis courts and the park in lot, and as well as discuss future improvements at the park. If anyone has concerns regarding the Kanaui District Park or other city parks, please feel free to contact our office. The second thing I wanted to go over was Resolution 23-271, which was introduced by Councilmember Kiaina and urges a reduction of the maximum speeding limits. It was voted on and passed out of the Transportation Committee on Wednesday, which was November 14th, and it will be heard at the upcoming full council meeting on December 6th at 10:00 a.m. So the measure basically urges the state legislature to enact legislation to remove the requirement for the city to conduct an engineering study for reductions of maximum speed limits on city streets. And the city's Department of Transportation Services, it urges them to assess whether maximum speed limits throughout residential areas should be lowered from 25 miles per hour to 15 miles per hour. And so, Councilmember Kiaina is respectfully requesting that the Neighborhood Board support that resolution moving forward. And I will put the link to that resolution in the chat after I'm done speaking. Third is, we also discussed this at the last Neighborhood Board meeting, but the grant and aid applications are due November 22nd at 2:00 p.m. And so, this program is administered by the City Department of Community Services, and last year awarded more than $10.6 million to 67 nonprofits across Oahu last year. So if you're interested, I will also include a link to apply for the grant and aid program. And lastly, Friday, October 27th, Councilmember conducted a site visit to Kahului Regional Park with representatives from the Oahu Invasive Species Committee, as well as the Departments of Parks and Recreation, Key Project, and HPD. And so, the purpose of the site visit was to explore the possibility of a potential base yard for the Oahu Invasive Species Committee on underutilized city park lands at Kahului Regional Park. And although jurisdiction mainly lies with the state and federal government with regard to managing and curbing the spread of invasive species, Councilmember believes the city has a responsibility to cuckoo all when possible. And given that little fire ant and koki frog infestations have been occurring with increasing frequency on the Windward side, Councilmember Kiaina believes it makes the most logistical sense to have the Oahu Invasive Species Committee operate out of the Windward side. And that's all I have. I'll put the information that I said I would provide in the chat now.
Any questions for the mayor's office or the council member? I see Mr. Sakamoto, Vice Chair Laura Burbage. All right, off you go, in that order.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Andy, and thank you, Jared. Concerned at our last meetings, previous meetings, there was a discussion about the Lilapuna crosswalk by Castle Professional and a lot of gas station Kamia Mia Highway, the large park holes making it impossible or very dangerous for people to cross, especially those with disabilities. How is facility maintenance doing on there, because that's a big issue right there? And then there was an article in the Star Advertiser I read concerning the DPP, there's mention about complete streets, they're waiting for their permits also, so I hope we can get our complete streets done sometime next year or whenever, because it's really bad. And another thing is the haiku. There was a, some kind of smell or thing that was reported about gases coming from a manhole or whatever, so I would like to know if there's any information. And then, Jaren, I did send you and Councilmember about the traffic violation bureau, asked for a report on that, if you can help me with that. And then, if there's any ordinance for automobiles who have large noises modified on the vehicles, that violation, because it's really bad on the H3 early in the morning. Thank you.
Adrian, were you involved in the sewer smell? I think I saw you, didn't I see you on an email?
I went by to check it out. I went by to check it out. I mean, it's right above the manhole, so I don't think it's emanating from anywhere else, but it's right, right in the intersection there.
Okay, sorry, Andy, go ahead. Was that Andy? It's Neil. Don, was that for both?
Yeah, I think for both, yeah.
Yes, for both, either one.
Well, we can follow up with E&amp;V regarding that. We've been talking to Representative Kitagawa's office, I think we received the email from her today about it as well. Yeah, we're happy to follow up on that one. Get an update for you.
Thank you. Also, Mr. Koano, when Ann, I didn't catch her last name, had given a community concern during the Department of Transportation discussion, she brought up three crosswalks that didn't have the audible clicker on loud enough that she could hear, and she's vision impaired. Were you on the call for those? And to whom would I send, once I get the exact locations for those three, to whom do I send those locations?
Chair, we can follow up for you if you'd like to.
Okay, I'll send it to both of you. And that was Spencer Johnson asked me to send it to him as well. Thank you. Any other que, oh, Adrian and then Laura, and Neil online.
Okay, thanks for the report, Andy and Jaren. This is more of a comment and some feedback for you. This is the first time, first month I've ever heard more people moving back to Hawaii than moving out. So it kind of got me wondering about some things. Unfortunately, it's also had a couple of businesses close in Kanaui or plan to close pretty soon. But I seem to think that maybe it's because people are finding a way to also conduct business on their own, maybe from home, because we have Amazon here last week doing a presentation. They already have like 1,200 vendors here from Hawaii that are selling to not just Hawaii, but beyond our borders, to the mainland or anywhere else. So just kind of thinking about that, the feedback is, how do we keep, you know, supporting our businesses here, making sure they're viable, and build support them beyond just, not in just Hawaii, but beyond our borders here? Thanks.
Was that a question for Andy?
It was just feedback, and I think maybe to, for our city council, as well as state, whoever else is listening to, you know, look at our business environment, how we're supporting them and be able to, be able to create their business, because we got a lot of resources here, assets, talents, that can, they're not just for Hawaii, but they're also that can be marketable to other places.
Do we have a...
I'll relay the message, yep.
Thank you. Do you have a, do we have a business group?
We do have a Kanaui Business Group. It's essentially a Chamber of Commerce, it's been around since 1969. But, you know, the, it's got, it's affected us here and there. Mostly, it's real estate, financial services right now, not a lot of retailers on it. But, I mean, I think between the city council and the state, and we talk about taxes, support services, be able to coordinate. And when we talk about business, they gotta, when we talk about our state agencies doing something, they gotta do inter-agency work. All of our businesses have to do inter-agency work. They gotta go to this agency and that agency to apply, get their permissions and that. How do we help them to be able to better do that process and not feel like they're violating some law while they're trying to start their business and sell something? So that's just my general comment. I think people are finding a way to do that now, and I hope we can continue to support that environment.
Thank you. Laura, and then Neil.
Hi, I was wondering about the Kanaui Gardens that's on Keahala Street? If you could give me an update on that, if that project is on its way, or, you know, where is it? And then, Pahia Street, that crosswalk? We've been waiting like eight years. So if we could get an update on that, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Okay, I think I'll take, I'm sorry, my laptop battery died and I had to get a power cord. This is Andy Koano, Director of Budget and Fiscal Services. This is Andy Koano, Director of Budget and Fiscal Services. I think, I think Kanyohi Gardens, I need to touch bases with Parks and Rec and get a more specific update on that. So Laura, sorry about that. I will, I'll send an update to Chair Ratkey by email and then talk about it next meeting.
Thank you.
Pahia Street, as I mentioned earlier, with regard to, you know, the strobe lighting for the crosswalk, Department of Design and Construction are currently planning to open bids in the spring of 2024. And that, you know, for the rehab work, the rehab work and the complete streets work will happen after the contractor is selected. So just based on timing that I'm aware of, more likely than not, and you know, I really apologize that you've been waiting so long, Laura. The work on Kamia Mia Highway specifically, you know, improving crossing conditions on Pahia Street probably will not happen until the next fiscal year, you know, realistically. Sometime in 2025, the 2025 fiscal year, beginning on July 1st, 2024.
Okay.
Just hold there.
How about just put in a hump? A speed hump? That would be so quick.
I'll talk to Renee, I'll talk to Renee S.P. I'll just see if that's possible.
Thank you. Andy, I don't know if you were cut off when I asked you about Anne and the sound of the clicking crosswalk meters. Were you on the call when she mentioned those three sites?
No, I was not. I was in the process of getting my extension card cord.
Yeah, no problem. I'll, as soon as I get with Mr. Sakamoto, I'll get her information. And I'm going to be forwarding to you three locations for crosswalks that the audible clicking device is barely audible.
Okay. And then if there were any questions from Mr. Sakamoto, please send those to me too, and I'll check with our team. Because find out if, you know, our Neighborhood Commission team listening in can also--
Thanks. Thanks, Andy. One more question from Neil.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to reiterate the words of Councilman Sakamoto. I am the originator. I originally brought up the crosswalk that is Lilipuna, the South Lilipuna and Cam Highway crosswalk. That is so dangerous as to be a hazard for Kapuna, much less any ADA-challenged person. It is almost impassable. A wheelchair is not going across that crosswalk. This is the third time now that I am bringing it up. It would be most unfortunate that it got put off until another year. And actually, the liability to the city and county, I would say, is rather significant. There is a hospital center there right next door. So we have people trying to access a medical facility on a crosswalk. Not only is it not painted, but it's not passable. A wheelchair is not, I'm sorry, Mr. Sakamoto is not going across that crosswalk. So I want to reiterate that we need to sort of investigate it, and this is the third time now that I'm bringing it up. I am also the person who originated the--
Can you, Neil, before you change topics, Neil, can you tell us why that's an impassable crosswalk?
Well, it's so broken up and unlevel.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I can trip in it, okay?
Okay. I didn't understand the reason. Now that I do, thank you. Go on, move on to your next topic, please.
The second one is the smell. Pahia and Kalakili at the intersection, Vice Chair said he went by and looked at it, I guess, and smelled that it was coming out of the manholes. I would say as the, there is a significant odor coming out of the manholes or wherever it's coming from. If the trades are not really blowing really, really hard, it gets all the way down to the elementary school, it's pretty significant. I don't think that it's a normal, it's not normal. And there have been a number of people, and everybody who goes by that intersection knows, and it's not just something recent. So it needs to actually be investigated. And then tonight, I don't know whether you were on when it was brought up, that perhaps a speed bump at Pahia Elementary School would be a good idea. That was brought up tonight earlier in this meeting. Thank you very much.
Mr. Flata, I got the Pahia speed bump, and I will communicate that to Department of Transportation Services. What's the crossing road again at Pahia for the smell?
Kalakili Highway.
Okay.
So right up the street from the elementary school, Ma'aka side, yeah?
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mahalo, moving on to our state senators. Senator Ki-- Ki'ohu Kalole.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay, aloha Chair Ratkey and board members. Hi, this is Jules from the Office of Senator Ki'ohu Kalole. You know, I heard tonight about the LFA, and I just want to report to you folks that Senator Ki'ohu Kalole is hosting a live informational briefing, which he will be hosting from the Committee on Commerce and Consumer Protection, as well as the Committee on Agriculture and Environment. And this informational briefing will be next week, Wednesday, on November 22nd at 1:30 p.m. So we will be having the coordinating group on Alien Pest, the pest species, the Office of Consumer Protection, Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. And we're also having the Hawaii Department of Agriculture. And what they're going to do is they're going to update the committees on the actions to address the outbreaks of the little fire ants and the coconut rhinoceros beetles. So I just wanted to inform you guys, we do have an informational briefing at the State Capitol in Conference Room 229, as well as on the Senate YouTube channel. I will be doing an e-blast tomorrow with all this information so that you folks can click on the button to watch it live. I just wanted to do a report on that. So please join us next week, Wednesday, November 22nd. Senator Ki'ohu Kalole is the Chair for the Committee on Commerce and Consumer Protection. Another report I wanted to give to Donald. Donald, I know you were concerned about that SB 2144. That's relating to electronic information technology accessibility for persons with disabilities. So we are in contact with the Office of Enterprise Technology Services, and we are awaiting an update from the working group. So once we get that working group, Donald, we will update you along with the board members. And for the LFA, a lot of people have heard the outbreaks, the windward areas infested. We had done some, you know, town halls from across Kailua, as well as I know Representative Matayoshi does have his upcoming LFA Town Hall that he can share. So I'm going to defer the LFA discussion with Representative Matayoshi. So thank you again, board members. I'll be standing by for questions.
Thank you. Is there a representative from Senator Awa's office? And for everybody who's here and some of the new board members, we go through all of the elected officials, senators and representatives, and then we do a Q and A after that. So if you do have a Q and A, just jot it down or do your best to remember it. Senator Awa?
Yep, aloha. Samantha Decourt here first. Awa? Hi, yeah.
Hi, welcome. Off you go.
Hi, don't mind me. We, well, for some of you that you're aware of, last month Senator Awa shared about his food tree planting project in Kahalou off of Kaikili Highway. So we have already started to clear that land. It's on the Ma'aka side of Kaikili Highway. And today we began digging the holes and preparing it for planting December 16th. So just wanted to let the community know that we have begun the project. If you've driven past there, you've already seen that we've cleared a good portion of it. We've got maybe a third more to go. Other than that, Senator Ki'ohu Kalole's office had already shared about the LFA CRB. We want to remind the community, if you are seeing any of these invasives in your yard, to please call for CRB 643 Pest, P-E-S-T. And then for LFA, it's the fire ants. No. I've got to check that. I'll put that in the chat. But other than that, that's all the updates that I have, Senator Awa, and I'll stand by for questions afterwards.
Thank you very much. Representative from, or Representative Kirigawa.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Happy to be here. Congratulations to the new board members who got sworn in today. So just a couple of updates. So my office manager, Jennifer, who many of you have talked to and has been with me since I got into office in 2018, she left my office at the end of October. She's going to law school full-time now. She was doing part-time. So I have a new office manager that you all will get to meet in the coming months. Her name is Wendy. She is born and raised in Kanyohi, so she's familiar with the community and a lot of the issues going on. And so if you call my office now, you'll be assisted by Wendy, and you'll get to meet her in the coming months. Also, just wanted to update everyone. We did have a Kanyohi Town Hall meeting at the end of October. We had a great meeting with over 70 people from the community who came out, lots of questions. And so we were able to answer a lot of those questions and issues that people had at the Town Hall. So that was myself, Rep. Matayoshi, Senator Ki'ohu Kalole, and Councilmember Kia Aina who did that. Also, I've been really busy in the interim in the last couple of months, especially with the Finance Committee at the Legislature. So I serve as the Vice Chair of the Finance Committee in the House. So we've been doing a bunch of site visits. We visited all the neighbor islands, including Maui and Lahaina, and just looking at what the needs are on all of the neighbor islands and, you know, things that the state have funded and how those things are going. And so we've been doing that. We've been visiting other communities on Oahu as well. And last week, I was happy to host a group of my colleagues from the Water and Land and Finance Committees out in Kanyohi. So we spent the day at Kako'o'o'iivi and Pai'pai'oheia, and then we went on a tour of Kanyohi Bay with DLNR, and there are many different divisions, Aquatic Resources and Do'Kear, and also had Auntie Mahialani Cypher and Auntie Rocky Kaluhiva, who provided a cultural aspect. And so we really got to see and learn about some of the challenges that are happening on the bay, unpermitted activities, whether it's kayak rentals or just other commercialization, and just figuring out how we can keep the bay a special place and protected because there are so many special things about Kanyohi Bay that are found nowhere else, whether that's aquatic life or the corals that are growing in the bay. And so I was able to host my colleagues, and that was great. And then right now, we're working on legislation for the upcoming session, which starts in January. So it's right around the corner. So of course, if people have ideas or things that they might want to work on for the next legislative session as far as bills, feel free to reach out to my office, and we can discuss, you know, what those issues are and how it might be possible to do some kind of legislation. And I can answer any questions after everyone else is finished. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next is Representative Matayoshi.
Hi, aloha, everyone. Representative Matayoshi here. I just wanted to first address the heartbreaking incident at State Hospital. You know, I saw it on the news with the rest of you. I got the call that night at about 9:15 from State Hospital. They kind of debriefed me since it's in my district. And it just breaks my heart, honestly. I think that the employees there have had enough. They're already overworked, overtaxed, huge burnout over at State Hospital under very stressful conditions. I'm currently Chair of the Labor and Government Operations Committee, and I've been working hard to try to fill a lot of vacancies, not only at State Hospital, but throughout state government, but especially at places like State Hospital or prisons, very high-stress environments where there's a lot of people that call in sick just because they, again, just because of burnout, where, you know, a certain number of employees are taking on the responsibility of a lot more just because they don't have those spaces filled. So I'm hoping to at least make some kind of impact and hopefully at least lessen the chance of something so tragic happening again. But again, it really breaks my heart, and my heart goes out to not only that family, but all the employees that work with them too. A couple of road updates. I've been leaning on DOT very hard over the past, I would say, almost year to start repaving Kamia Mia Highway between Castle Junction and Hawaiian Memorial Park. And it is finally slated to start in early December. That was before Wilson Tunnel broke, though. So Wilson Tunnel repairs are still underway. They're scheduled to be completed this weekend and hopefully fully reopen on Monday. I'm not sure. I haven't gotten an update from DOT yet, whether that's going to slow down the repaving of Kamia Mia Highway. But I sure hope not. We've been waiting long enough. And that, honestly, that highway's been getting so bad that it's embarrassing at this point. So I'm really hoping DOT does its job and repaves that highway quickly and well for us. A little fire ants, obviously, still a huge problem. Thank you to Senator Ki'ohu Kalole's office for partnering with me in kind of tearing apart Department of Agriculture over the past couple of months. We've been having a number of meetings with them that were, I wouldn't say vicious, but very strongly worded, really, really pounding on them to change their minds and get these rules moving that would allow them to stop the sale of infected plants from infected nurseries that's been spreading all over our coast. So, good news, today I got an email from Department of Agriculture. It sounds like they finally changed their mind. I actually got a call from them too. But it sounds like they finally changed their mind and are moving forward with the original rules that would allow them to stop the movement of infected plants and materials off of infected areas. So again, not stopping sale. If they treat the plant and, you know, remove all the fire ants from it or other, you know, pests, they can still sell that plant, but you have to treat it before you move it off. You can't just be selling, you know, queen fire ants all over the windward coast. So it looks like we finally got movement on that. I think part of it was Senator Ki'ohu Kalole finally scheduling and threatening that public hearing, which was great. We kept giving DOA a chance, you know, time and time again to change their minds. And I personally met with their AGs and basically changed their minds legally on whether they could move this thing forward. So we're glad to see that movement forward. I don't know, Jules would know better than me. I don't know if that public hearing is still going to happen now that they've changed their minds. But honestly, after dealing with DOA for so long, I just don't trust them. So to the board, please still send that letter. I don't care what DOA is saying right now. We need to keep up the pressure campaign on them. So I think that a letter from your Neighborhood Board and many other Neighborhood Boards is really going to help us keep them on the right track. And hopefully, we'll still have that hearing just hanging over their heads. Lastly, just a quick reminder that the Kanyohi Christmas Parade is coming up, December 2nd. Everyone knows, avoid that area from the early morning hours until around, I'd say, 11:30 or noon when Santa, the Santa float comes through and the cleanup crew comes through. They should be shutting down the roads completely at about 8:30. But again, anyone who lives here knows, just avoid the area that morning if you possibly can. And with that, I'll take any questions.
And finally, Representative Ussy Burdick.
Aloha, everybody. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person again with you today, but I'm really glad for this continued hybrid remote option. Let me just share my screen really quick on my presentation. So welcome to our new board members. This is my contact information if you ever need to get in touch with me. I've been working on the wildfire prevention working group in the House. So basically, for anybody who doesn't know, when the wildfires happened in Maui, the House created six working groups. I'm serving on the wildfire prevention working group. We have put out our draft report. I've been trying to like email everybody and post it on social media. So if you can't find it, let me know. I will help you find it. And we have a public hearing on that tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. This is for our public feedback. And it's really important that members of the public weigh in on this. We've got some really great stuff in there. Things like discouraging land banking and-- Things like discouraging land banking and making sure that large landowners actually manage the land that they own. And so we need your support in order to make sure that stays in there for the final report, which will come out on December 15th. And these reports are going to help shape legislation for the upcoming legislative session. So real quick, how to find them? You just go on capital.hawaii.gov/house.asbx. You click the button for the correct working group that you want to look into. Mine is the wildfire prevention working group. And then you can click here for the document and submit testimony, email-written testimony to wfpwg@capital.hawaii.gov. Or you can sign up on the hearing notice to testify via Zoom again tomorrow, Friday the 17th at 10:00 a.m. Last session, the Legislature funded $6 million to the Department of Accounting and General Services to retrofit statewide as many hurricane shelters as they can. I have requested, and the Kainulu Neighborhood Board has requested, one of those shelters to be on the Windward side. And I'm hoping that maybe the Kani'oehe Neighborhood Board, if you haven't yet, might want to put in a formal request. Because right now, the Windward side of Oahu has no Cat 4 or higher hurricane shelters. They've all been downgraded to Cat 3. And even if we do get a hurricane shelter on the Windward side, it's not going to be enough to house everyone. So you have to make sure that your own ohana has 14 days worth of food, water, medicine, and other supplies. And we will continue talking about little fire ants probably until everybody tests their house at least, you know, once a year, ideally, once a month would be great. I'm hosting a virtual Town Hall. It's going to be actually hybrid, so in-person at Kailua District Park and also on Zoom. If you want to attend on Zoom, here's the link to sign up or just contact me if you need it. And you can actually take action on little fire ants right now, again tomorrow, but this one's at 1:30. There's going to be a hearing at the Department of Agriculture. There's an action alert to testify. You can testify on Zoom. Here's the meeting ID. Again, reach out to me if you want me to send it to you. And this is what Representative Matayoshi was talking about. The Department of Agriculture is in the process of changing their rules to give them the authority to stop those infested plant sales. And we really need you to show up and testify and let them know that this is what the people want. And with that, there's my contact information again. Aloha.
Any questions for the senators or the representatives? I see Mr. Sakamoto and, okay, go ahead, Donald.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Representatives, for your wonderful report. Donald Sakamoto, at-large board member. A question is for the, my name is Rep. Scott Matayoshi. Scott, there is changes that are happening at the Capitol. I heard from this of a communication accident board this morning at their meeting about parking changes at the state Capitol Garage where they want people to park across the street and then underneath the garage. And there's people who are disabled that are unable to go from across the street to the Capitol. And they, they're trying to accommodate people to still park underneath the garage. And then any training going on for legislation, for submitting testimonies, everything? I know I used to go last session, but if you can elaborate on that. And then what is going on with the security at the Capitol with metal detectors and how to go through all the security for this year's legislation? Thank you.
One of these days, Donald's question is going to have one part, and I'm just going to be totally thrown off. Well, I'll start with the security. I'm not too sure what's happening with security. I believe the security's contract is expiring at some point, though. You know, originally, we put it in place more for the pandemic, but because all the restrictions are dropped, there's no huge reason for security anymore. That being said, and maybe Rep. Kirigawa might have more information on this, but I think, I think we are kind of trying to work on a little more security for the Capitol just from a public safety sort of standpoint, and especially because guns are kind of everywhere now with that Supreme Court decision. So we are trying to make certain choke points, I believe, sell the Capitol to just protect the people inside of it. As for parking, yes, we are trying to, again, security. We're trying to move the public parking to the DOH parking lot across the street. Part of the reason is the underground parking lot. Cars are parked right next to support pillars. And security experts that we hired to go down there just kind of freaked out because you can park a car bomb next to a support pillar and bring down a good chunk of the building. So maybe don't spread that around too much. Not a great idea, public parking right underneath your support pillars. So we're trying to move a lot of the public parking again across the street, but at the DOH parking lot. I think there still will be handicap spots, though, underneath the Capitol. I can check on that and get back to you next time during the potluck. But yeah, that was a huge security concern that we're trying to address right now. As for access, I know that we are still going to be continuing on with Zoom. I'm not sure about the training for, I assume you mean training for how to access Zoom. I'm not sure that we, I think there are modules up online for that. But just, you know, rest assured, we're not stopping the online access for not only people who have a hard time getting to the Capitol in Oahu, but especially for people on neighbor islands who have a very hard time getting to the Capitol to testify. So that won't be ending anytime soon.
Just to add to that real quick, the Public Access Room puts on trainings every year for how to testify, and they include the Zoom portion. So I'll let you know when they publicize that. Usually, it's around early January.
Thank you. I have a question for any of the senators or the representatives that want to do something good. It occurs to me recently that if you are a visually impaired individual, you cannot get a handicapped parking pass. This, I get the understanding that somebody who's visually impaired wouldn't be driving. But the person that is driving them, if they're relegated to the backside of a parking lot, they have to try and schlep their person from, you know, it's extremely difficult. So if somebody liked to take that under their belt, I would imagine that would be greatly appreciated by those that are visually impaired.
Okay, thank you for that. Well, I'll discuss it with everyone else and someone will take that on, I'm sure. Mo, just to clarify, the parking hangers, right?
That's, that's correct. That's correct.
Okay. I know those are subject to a little bit of abuse by certain unsavory individuals. And I think they were trying to trend more towards the license plate instead, but, yeah, I mean, your point is well-taken.
Thank you. Who is the, do you know who the, and I see Donald raising his hand over out of the corner of my eye here. So my question is going to be, do you know who the authority for that is? Because I'll just go straight there.
I'm guessing Donald knows better than anyone else here.
Okay, Donald, you can teach me afterwards.
Well, I just wanted everybody to know what happened with that. In previous legislations, the National Federation of Blind of Hawaii testified against people who are visually impaired or blind to have placards because they said people stuck in walk. The individual can be dropped off by the curb. The person who's driving can park their car and then they can guide that person into the facility where they're going. So that's their reason.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll just reintroduce that legislation with some different language because that's a ridiculous answer. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for our senators and representatives? Neil, go ahead.
Neil, you're muted. Neil, you're muted.
My bad. Could you, sorry. Representative Burdick, could you repeat how and what committee we would go about attempting to get a hurricane shelter on the Windward side, please?
That would be an email to the Department of Accounting and General Services. And I can connect you with the right person if you either give me your contact information or send me an email.
I will send you an email.
And we'll make sure that our CERT team gets a chance to participate in that conversation as well.
It was, yeah, on behalf of the Emergency Preparedness Committee, I was preemptively asking, yes.
Yes, awesome. Thank you. No other questions? Representatives, thank you very much. You, of course, are all invited, especially to come to our December Potluck, where you'll have a chance to interact with the community in a much more relaxed environment. So please join us at our December meeting for some chow. Moving on to board business, we have approval of regular meeting minutes from October. Are there any motions?
Chair, it's September also.
I, I don't have September on this, on this set of minutes.
We didn't have quorum last time.
Was it the August, it was the August minutes? I see, well, let's just deal with these one at a time. Let's start with the October minutes, which is our most recent. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Let's accept them.
Sorry?
I move to accept them.
It's been moved, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstention? Just as a comment, we need to make sure that the minutes go through a spell check. I'm looking at the minutes that I have here, and there's too many, too many typos to, to be able to, to bring up here, but I'm going to pass these on to you, Spencer. Minutes, okay. And then there's the question of September minutes, is that right? Is there a motion to accept the minutes from September?
I move to accept them. That's noted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I'm going to get back to that. Neither was the September. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed or abstentions? Okay, those minutes are accepted, adopted. And now the August minutes, they don't appear on the agenda. They do, it appears on the minutes of the, of the October minutes that we just accepted. Due to lack of quorum, the Thursday, August minutes were postponed until the November regular meeting. It shows that in the minutes. So is there a motion to accept the August minutes? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Any opposition or abstention? All right. I think we're all caught up with the minutes. Next order of business is board committee reports. Were there any attended meeting reports that need to be brought up? Holly and Adriel and Dale.
Thank you. I'll be brief. Permitted interaction group on trespassing in Haiku Valley. We've actually met nine times now in the last year. So mahalo to everyone who's been attending online and to those neighborhood members and board members who've been going around on foot, canvassing neighbors as to the extent of the problem and coming up with solutions. They've been targeting Hokulele subdivision particularly this last month. They've visited 114 houses, which is 50% of Hokulele. Neighbors have asked specifically for there to be signs posted on the outside of the fence so that trespassers do not attempt to access the Puoni Place Gate. Puoni Place has barbed wire across the top of it. It looks like a way to get out of the valley if you're walking along the H3 access road. It's very, very dangerous, and it really annoys the neighbors to have that worry there about people hurting themselves. They are requesting signs on the inside of the valley. If, like stairs, no stairs. If there's a cultural park, they will still need those signs to prevent people trying to get out through Puoni Place Gate. There's also an option that the neighbors like of double-gating that. Right now, you can drive up Hokulele and you can like pull in, and there's a sign saying, "No access this way." So if we can double-gate that, that would make it much harder for random tourists or whatever to drive around looking for access points. And so, yeah, 51%, or 50% of the houses have been visited. And a total, 66% said trespassing was not a problem of all the houses visited so far. And 16%, 16.3% said it was a problem. 20% said it had declined in recent years, which is also what we heard from Officer Kanite's office. And mahalo to Iaka of Senator Oahu's office for attending those online meetings, too. Really appreciate everyone coming together, talking, listening, coming up with solutions. Signs, please. Double fencing. Thank you.
Next is Adriel.
We did have a table at the Kukuna Fair on Saturday. We had a couple neighbors come by the table and ask questions and left their names. So it's a good event. I think other events at Winter Mall, we'll be able to set up a table if the organizers invite us to that. So look for more opportunities like that.
Awesome. Thanks for supporting the table and all the board members that attended that. Dale?
Thank you, Chair. Just would like to bring everybody up to speed. I handed out some notes from a meeting that we had on Saturday, October 28th, for the Emergency Preparedness Committee. Two goals that were outlined. Goal number one, it was to raise awareness, identify, understand the needs of the community with respect to emergency preparedness. And the second is to detail a plan for the community that works in conjunction with Honolulu County Government, State of Hawaii, and American Red Cross. One of the goals and what was asked of us initially was for the committee to make recommendations on locations for pods, points of distribution. And when we reviewed it, what I'd like to share with everyone here is that please think of Kani'oehe as a crossroads of the Windward side. And if you think of the ingress and egress of all the access points that you have, they come through Kani'oehe. So although our community is 38,000, we'd probably see a much greater impact if we were to have any type of an emergency. The seven locations that we came up with for our recommendations were the Polygolf Course, Windward Shopping Center, Castle High School, Benjamin Park Elementary School, Windward Mall, King Intermediate, and Kani'oehe District Park slash Windward Community College. And there was a number of reasons that were brought into consideration, ingress and egress for the community, the services that they're able to provide, would they be shelter in place, opportunities, et cetera. What I had outlined previously is that we do want to work closely with the city government, State of Hawaii, and American Red Cross. So we have already started, and thank you, Neil, for your work on this as well. We've already started to reach out. American Red Cross will be here in January to present to the board. And Chair, thank you for the opportunity to afford them that. My ask on that is if anyone from the community or from the board has questions in advance, we'd like to get that to John Blaylock, who is the American Red Cross Preparedness Manager. And I'll be happy to deliver that information. And then Neil has been working with the county as well, with the Department of Emergency Management. So we're trying to take it from all sides to ensure that the community is prepared. And there is no doubt with the appointment of a new board member, of having someone with Mark's expertise is invaluable. So I would just like to leave it at that. Any questions?
Awesome. Thank you. Are there any other committee reports? All right, hearing none. Our next meeting is going to be our annual Pa'ina Potluck here Thursday, December 21st at 6:30. And I'll coordinate with everybody what you'd like to bring, and then I'll see what everybody wants to bring and make sure we just don't have a pile of paper plates and forks. We have some food to go along with it. And I'd like to, and I'll send out a personal invitation to all of the folks that come to our meetings to chit-chat. And of course, all the board members are invited to come. It's just a great opportunity to, to see everybody in a little bit more relaxed environment. Yes, Dale?
Chair, I apologize. I missed one thing. One of the things that we would like to look at is the opportunity for SERT training. And as I understand, excuse me, C E R T training, excuse me. And as I understand, it will be held in January, the first, second, and fourth Saturday of the month of January. And I believe between Mark and us, we'll be able to get that out to the board members who might be interested in attending.
Thank you. And let me just get back one more second to the potluck. The potluck is not a hybrid meeting. You cannot share food virtually. You have to come and eat in person. So I'd be glad to see everybody here at the meeting. With that, Mr. Sakamoto?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight for this wonderful neighborhood board, all the presentations from our representatives, the board questions, the public. And thank you for Spencer Johnson and Olalela for doing this. And thank you for Spencer Johnson and Olalela for doing this fantastic meeting setup. And thank you for the wonderful, beautiful shirts that we got, 50-year anniversary of the neighborhood board. It's wonderful. Thank you.
And with that, this meeting is adjourned.